We do have a four. Item three on our agenda this evening is items for review and discussion. Item three A is appearance by Ms. Bree Knolls with a request to host a fundraising awareness tent for Four Falls on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two in the downtown area. Is Ms. Knolls here? Would you please come forward and give your name and address and outline your presentation, please?
Hello, my name is Bree Knolls. My address is three sixteen Perk Court, Monroe, Georgia. So back when Maggie Dimes had my position at Sunmark as marketing director, they originally talked about doing something for the Food Truck Friday with the cause kind of partnering up to get some awareness for them, but unfortunately it got canceled because of COVID. So now that I'm in this position, I was wanting to kind of make her dream come to life in a sense. We were interested in doing something for the Food Truck Friday on March eighteenth. We have permission from Brian Fountain to use his parking lot, which is the corner of Congress and Ball Street. So we would just put our tent up and then the cause would be there depending on what animals they have. They may have some animals there for adoption. If they're kind of more skittish, then we'll just have like pamphlets saying what animals are available at that time. We would just give out T-shirts and then I have some like collapsible dog goals to give out as well. So that's about it, just kind of getting their name out there and then, you know, just partnering with them for a good cause.
And this is for Four Falls here in Perry.
Mm-hmm, yep. I have Amanda with me from the cause.
Mr. Gilmore, do you have any input into this since it's on my Food Truck Friday, but it's out of the footprint?
I would say probably the city attorney is more aware of this because there's an issue, which is why they're coming to you, as I understand it, for you to grant the exception that you provide your ordinance relative transient merchants. But the other portion of that I want to emphasize is that if you give the okay, they can't sell or give away food.
Yes, we were.
And so they're in competition with everybody else.
Of course, yes.
To Mayor, what Mr. Gilmore was referring to is this was first, the question was posed as to whether or not there was an issue with it being a violation of our transient merchant policy in our code of ordinances. And in this particular situation, the definition of transient merchant says that it does not include any person, firm, or corporation who sells items in the downtown district on property owned or leased by the individual or organization holding the sale, provided that permission for such sale has been obtained from council. And so assuming that adoption fees may apply for any type of animal that's adopted there, we believe that this activity that they're requiring about would fall under this item seven. And so that's why they're before council asking for permission. And I know that Ms. Knolls indicated they have the owner's property. Just to be consistent with this provision of the code, you know, the city would just want to see that in writing.
Yeah, I have received an email from Perry.
Just a question. I'm not opposed to, I do wonder what kind of precedence that sets for us. I mean, you know, we've had some discussions around baseball teams wanting to sell different things during that period of time. We've had people wanting to set up voter registration booths and those things. That, will this just lead us to, that would that require basically give approval to the voter?
I think that that opens the door for more people to inquire about it. That doesn't necessarily mean that approval is required.
Okay. Please.
Yeah, I think every other, case by case, would you think that, as you're saying, to be, each case will be different as we kind of look at it like we're doing with this one right now. And I think for its legal eye, that you inform us going forward that whether we will be in compliance or not, I think that's the most important thing, actually, going back to the matter said, we want to be compliant and we don't want to do nothing out of line with that. Other people will say, well, y'all showing favoritism, we don't want that to come forth. We want to do right toward everybody.
Questions or comments, council members, relative to this proposal?
Excuse me, Ms. Ewing, help me out here. Is there a distinction between if someone sets up like on Mr. Fountain's private property that he's given his approval for versus setting up like a baseball team, whatever it was, like in the streets, kind of on downtown?
That would be my interpretation, is that there is a difference because someone setting up within the footprint is trying to be a part of our event. Mr. Gilmore may have a different interpretation than that, but I believe that this is an owner of the property in the downtown district who is wanting to allow someone to utilize that property and it's not going to be an actual part of the Food Truck Friday or within the footprint of the event, but they're just taking advantage of the crowd that will be present.
And just to build on, given the weaker of my memory, yes, I think the same things have occurred at the New Perry Hotel throughout Food Truck Friday that they've used their property to open up or make good sales, I think. I don't know whether they have provided down there, but I think we have seen that happen before outside of the footprint.
I believe that's correct. And also maybe slightly one other distinction, and I believe Mr. Gilmore can correct me on this, is the cause considered a partner with the city?
No.
No? Okay. That was going to be one other thing that I would say may be distinguishable.
Not not as a partner of one. We have had a contract arrangement with the pride, and maybe we still do. But I think the primary thing goes back to what councilman Mayor Proton King said, is groups coming before you to get permission to participate and all the conditions are understood by you compared to some other group just showing up and proceeding about selling, collecting, whatever, whatever the case may be.
I'm sorry, I was just, you know, just one thing, the thing about our concern with transient merchants was that they were often in competition with, you know, our brick and mortar business, but you are not. You are already a brick and mortar business and the way you would have there, it's not going to be in competition with anybody else in downtown, plus you're on private property in, I'm not sure if I'm correct.
I guess my feeling is long as, as long as it's not the footprint, I think I'm okay. Especially if you're not working.
I agree, well.
Yeah, it's on, but yeah. Thanks for it.
Okay, better. Yeah. I think, I mean, as the mayor said, if we had someone that's like this at the New Perry Hotel before and they're not within the footprint, then I think I'm okay.
Since they're not in competition with, you know, our merchants downtown, I don't see a problem with it.
Any other questions or comments? Well, to that. So council, do we have consensus to, I don't know that we can vote on this tonight. So would we take a vote of council, will it take a vote of council or concurrence?
I think I would recommend just having a vote on it to approve it.
We'll bring it before us, council, tomorrow night for a vote. We typically do a number of things. We don't vote on the first night that we've heard an issue, but when we're not in regular session, we don't take votes. So tomorrow night, it will come before us as an agenda item and council will vote at that point in time on your proposal. Do you have any additional questions for us?
I don't think so. I just want to make sure y'all know that we're not going to be selling the shirts for this to give them out, so no competition there either.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. It sounds like you've got a very good cause working there and we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming this evening. Three B, our employee hearing. And three B one is input from city employees relative to the proposed PTO amendment to the city's leave policy. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I feel like I'm a bit of deja vu up here talking about PTO. I feel like we just did this last fall. But as you know, there's been renewed interest in a paid time off program. And so in response to that renewed interest, the city manager drafted a memorandum that you saw at your last work session that outlined a substantially revised paid time off program. And I believe you have a copy of that memorandum in your materials this evening. So what I wanted to do was take a moment to outline the key elements of this proposal. You should also know that every employee, every full-time employee has been provided a copy of this memorandum, advice on how this process will work for them, and then they were given the opportunity to show this evening to voice their opinions to you all as well. So in order to transition to the proposed leave program, each employee's entire annual leave balance would be converted to paid time off. Employees would no longer accrue sick time, but they would retain their sick leave balance to be used in accordance with current policy. Once an employee is exhausted, his or her sick leave balance, assuming they do, that account would simply be closed. Employees would receive roughly the sum of their current sick and annual leave accrual rates as paid time off each period, so that's the most significant transition is moving away from accruing sick time. So you would just accrue in your paid time off category. The lone exception to this is twelve-hour shift police, as the proposal recommends, increase in their accrual rate to account for their twelve-hour shifts. Currently, only a twenty-four-hour shift firefighter has had a different accrual rate than other employees. There's also a recommendation to have the city manager's leave account balance contributed to personnel. So we would take that balance away from him. We'd get all of his leave. That's a joke, that's not actually in the policy.
I'm glad. I would like to.
There must be an event that might see that, right?
No, I'm really glad you can't vote.
The proposal does also recommend an increase to the maximum payout upon employee's separation for any reason. This marks another significant shift. This could mean the difference in thousands of dollars for employees who are separating service from the city, particularly for our long-serving employees, this would really benefit them. The maximum payout varies based on employee's shift, as was the years of service with the city, increasing every five years to a maximum payout once employees completed twenty-five years of service. That would be the highest payout cap that you could receive, would be at that twenty-five year window. From personnel's perspective, this proposal represents a substantial improvement to what was previously considered, while still retaining the key advantages of a paid time off program, namely the increased flexibility and value of ports to employees. But the proposal also rewards longevity, which again we felt was important, with both the accrual rate and leave payout upon separation, increasing for longer-serving employees. As proposed, the amendment represents a meaningful step towards expanding our benefits package while placing us at a competitive recruiting advantage relative to our municipal peers and area businesses. I have had the opportunity to speak with employees across departments. Any impressions that I've gotten from those employees have been favorable. I think we did a, I think the city manager did a good job of addressing the concerns that were raised at our open hearings last time. As you recall, those were involved mainly down too deep perceived loss of sick time. That was the biggest issue that our employees had, and so we addressed that concern. We've also increased those leave payout upon separation, so that's another critical milestone for us. So I am looking forward to hearing any other opinions we have from employees tonight, but this time we have the answer to any questions you have.
Questions, council?
I got one. On overall, if you talk to each individual, what's your kind of take here about it for the going forward?
Yes, so this is significantly different than last time and I'll, you know, being candid, there were a lot of concerns the first time we introduced this. This time, there haven't been concerns. I have not had a single negative con- persuasion with any employee about this proposed change. Thank you.
Other questions?
Did I hear you say that tonight's the night that they were to come and voice their concerns?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Sorry, I've been, the mayor, I've got one question, Matt, sorry, gosh. You and Mitchell are both equally awesome, so I just got you confused there for a second. I apologize. But you said that the annual leave payout upon separation was going to increase, what's that going to increase to?
It's actually contingent upon which category of service you're in. So you're going to have regular employees who are working your eight-hour shifts, you'll have twelve-hour shift police officers and twenty-four-hour shift firefighters. Each one of those has a different payout upon separation and then further, it's also differentiated differentiated based on years of service. So there's a lot of different figures that could potentially be contingent upon your years of service and what category you fall into.
Thank you.
And for the record, I think I'm more awesome than Mitchell.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any employees here this evening that would like to address council relative to this change? Ms. Frank, would you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Becky Graham. I live at one thirty forty-one Circle, Perry, Georgia. I work in the customer service department and I again wanted to reiterate my concerns of changing over our earned time, particularly for myself and other employees. But just so you know, I've already, I've got accrued about four hundred and thirty hours of vacation time and three hundred and ninety-seven hours of sick time. And I feel like I have earned that through my dedication and loyalty to my service to the city of Perry and I just don't want to lose that time that I have earned through the work that I perform for the city. So that's what I wanted to reiterate again tonight.
Mr. Gilmore, let me ask a question, uh, Mr. You, as I understand it, sick leave will not be lost. Sick leave will continue on, they can take it as long as they're employed with the city until it's used up. Correct?
That's right. Using Ms. Graham's example here, not one thing changes on the amount of sick leave that she has accumulated, nor do the conditions of how she can use the sick leave change from the current policy. The difference would be that from whatever, if you pass this from whatever effective date it is, it is Graham no longer accrues any additional sick leave. However, she will still accrue basically the same amount of sick and annual leave, but it's all paid time off. So she can use paid time off for whatever reason she wants, as long as her supervisor approves the time off. In addition to that, going back to, since she's been long-term employee, the number of annual leave hours that Ms. Graham mentioned, all that annual leave rolls over into paid time off. And compared to the current system, if at some times Ms. Graham decides to leave, she's paid out more than what she would get right now, which is a major difference. There is a cap on the payout, two-four, two-forty, two-hundred-and-forty hours, period, flat out, no matter how much you have accrued, no matter how long you've worked for the city, no matter what shift you're on. That's what we have right now, okay? This proposal changes that to where you get, on each of those levels, you get more of the payout of your paid time off if you have it, and it also adjusts for accumulation payout, as Mr. White indicated, if you are a patrol officer working twelve shifts as well as what you have for firefighters. So what this, I guess, the most exact perception, as far as the city manager is concerned, no employee, no matter how long, full-time employee, no matter how long he or she has worked for the city, loses anything on this proposal. Every one of the full-time employees gains on this proposal. And so administratively, that's what we would recommend too. As Mr. White has indicated, the majority of the employees seem to be okay.
So if you're a twenty-five-year employee, we're going from paying you two-hundred-and-forty hours to three-hundred-and-ninety hours. So it's a hundred-and-fifty-hour increase on payout that we're agreeing?
I think that's right for eighty hours.
Eighty, but if you're a firefighter, it's five-hundred-and-eighty hours.
Correct.
That will pay out the maximum.
That's right.
We will not pay out anything on, anything that's not used as sick leave.
That is correct.
That's been our policy along.
That's our current policy and it's not proposed to be changed.
So just to make sure that I understand correctly, the four hundred and thirty hours of vacation time I have now, two-hundred-and-forty of that will roll over?
No.
All of it.
All of it.
All of it will roll over.
However, if you, if you decide, for example, to retire two months from now, okay, and council's already adopted this policy, we'll say effective January first, okay, you would get the?
Three-ninety.
Three-ninety.
If you have twenty-five years of service.
Right. If there is no change, council keeps everything the same. Same time when you retire, you get paid out two-four. So you subtract that difference and that's what you gain underneath this proposed policy. Now, which you'll get more.
I have a question. If we made, made it, just like we did with District Two, when we voted for it, then we started from there, what would be the difference in doing it from the day we moved to put it in place, then going out with January? What would be the difference?
Policy-wise, I don't think there would be any particular difference, but the recommendation from administration would be that we go back to January the first, because it's just a very understandable thing to go in and make an adjustment. And most of the time, that's when we have the effective date for these transitions. You may remember, for example, when we changed about the retirement system, you know, that was set for January first.
And I would hate to move to January twenty-third because people who chose to retire during this year would be penalized versus anyone that waited till after the twenty-third and the policy went into effect, so.
That's right.
All right, thank you for your time.
Any other questions, Ms. Frank? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to stand in support of the new policy. I represent my employees to have a, the last round, we actually had a consensus that we would have been okay with that, though there were concerns. And we didn't come and speak because we thought it was going to be approved incorrectly. And fortunately for us, it's actually gotten better since that time. So we, I represent the code enforcement and building and we would like you guys to push this through.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to address council relative to the change in this paid time off? None? Well, council, do you have any additional questions after hearing that?
No, I'm grateful that, that the city took the time to go back and take a good hard look at it and listen to the employees from before. That's, that's very gratifying, so I apologize for doing that. Thank you.
I have to, I appreciate y'all looking at each employee and want to make sure that you might not satisfy all of them, but the majority of them will receive it and accept it. I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have to close that public hearing, do I, because it was really important? I want to make sure. Item three C is the office of the city manager. Is it safe for me to assume for us to proceed with preparing the amendment in order to enact this change?
Do we have consensus to move forward for a vote tomorrow?
No, no, we'll be prepared for tomorrow.
Okay. Or when Mr. Gilmore gets it ready.
Well, based on Mr. White's comments, I'm not sure if I want to get this ready.
Sounded like a pretty nice donation on the part of the city manager.
He had two minutes.
Yes, Mr. Gilmore, you have consensus to move forward. Now, three C, office of the city manager. Three C one is considered disposal of assets, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you. I will defer to Mr. Worthing.
So, back in twenty-sixteen, the city, with the guidance of council and the city manager, made a great decision to purchase a number of Bitcoin. That was basically as an assurance policy against hackers and malware or who, who would, basically how their operation works is they would attack your system, code your data, and then charge you money to get the code to unlock all your data. And most of them operate through the Bitcoin system. They want to get paid Bitcoin because they think it's more anonymous than cash or bank transfer. At the time, Bitcoin was worth about four hundred dollars and we bought several of them to have on hand so it could act more quickly in case we were hacked. Since that time, the city has enacted several new upgrades to all of our software systems and we think that we are secure enough to not need those on hand. And also just happens that Bitcoin, if you haven't been following the news, is worth a lot more than four hundred dollars nowadays. As of this afternoon, the last time I checked, it was around thirty-eight thousand dollars a piece. And the city has roughly three Bitcoins, a little bit less, two-point-nine-something. So depending on when we sell, I would like to point out that Bitcoin is very volatile, especially with the situation that's going on in Ukraine and Russia. So the price goes up and down tremendously, but right now it's worth around a hundred thousand dollars or a little more than a hundred thousand dollars. We're seeking council's permission to sell those assets and take the cash. And, Mr. Gilmore, would you like to take the part of what we're going to do with the cash?
Yes, following up on a conversation that we had at the last meetings of council, the administration would recommend that the proceeds from this sale go into a restricted account for the downtown development authority to use as their funding to help on their projects. You may remember that there was discussion about the value of the downtown getting its own revenue source and becoming creditworthy. I trust you all remember that. And that would be the recommendation on the best way to use that windfall on the Bitcoin.
Questions, council? I don't know who did that investing, but I sure do want to talk to a man. I don't know who did that investing, but I sure do want to talk to a manager, because that's a pretty good return. Twelve-hundred dollars to a hundred-and-sixteen thousand is a pretty good investment. Questions?
I, I have a, I guess, a couple of other questions, but just going back to the DDA, I guess I must need a whole seminar on the DDA. So, so they could get this one-hundred thousand dollars, and could they move to do things as unelected officials without permission, so to speak, from us?
The manager's recommendation on that would be no. The council would hold that as a restricted account that they could use applying towards a project, but they would still have, have council's okay relative to what that project would be. Because the, as the other concern I would have, excuse me, is you have, I think, following up on Dr. Albrecht's point, is if we just transferred over to the DDA, then the DDA is a totally separate authority, and they may or may not continue to follow through with what the restriction is that the city has on that. Because once any bodies are transferred over into the DDA account, then the authority makes a decision on what it wants to do with that. And I, I believe, you know, one of the major thrusts that council had talked about is not having problems relative to new projects in the downtown, but being very cautious relative to what that mix of projects may be and how public financing is used in some way, shape, or form relative to that. So if you agree to this proposal, it would be a restricted account with the city dedicated to a DDA project that council approves to proceed with. So that way, they still could have, uh, a covered statement to help them on being creditworthy, but council still has final say on what the project would be.
Other questions, council, relative to the payout?
I have one, uh, to them thinking a bit, that do DDA have a policy inside their bylaw that govern them to a point that they just cannot do anything with the amount of money that they receive for downtown?
They have some, uh, uh, fact, Mr. Smith's not here because he's at the DDA meeting, and that's some of the major things they're going over right now, is a post-policy relative to projects and, uh, just a general policy about where there might be some funding assistance or whatever the case may be. But at least in the, in the broader terms, Mayor Potem King, they can do whatever they want with whatever money they get. I'll, I'll give you an example. Uh, they purchased a lot where, uh, the Commodore building is being constructed right now, and they turned around and they sold that lot, and they, they made some money on it, okay? As a, an authority underneath the state law, they have every right to use those proceeds as what they think is appropriate as long as it is legal. But I think one of the big concerns that, that I would have relative to that, and this is just, I'm not saying our DDA wouldn't do that, please don't get me wrong, but overall, we used to have to keep thinking ahead about what things are going on, I would be concerned about taking some of the proceeds and they use it for operating type of money rather than for capital or projects. Now, they may not do that, but we don't have any guarantee that that's how they would operate. And so therefore, uh, if it is council's desire to assist the DDA particularly for, uh, project development, then I think it'd be wise for us to advise the DDA, DDA about that, but we control as a council that count, whatever size it is, until, until there's a presentation made. It's similar to, uh, what you currently do with a lot of other organizations and boards, well, like, say, like, for example, on Main Street. You may remember they came in and talked about needing some additional money for side loans? You know, and you heard that, reviewed their request, and you said, yes, that, that makes sense.
Mayor, if I may, I was also going to add just to that. I mean, there are statutory limits, um, for the DDA under the downtown development authority law that does say this is what they can do, and that was part of that presentation that Mr. Smith went over, I think, at your, maybe your last work session, where he kind of outlined, you know, if it meets the definition of a project and if it's to revitalize the downtown area for the purpose of trade and commerce, um, then those are kind of the statutory limits on the DDA. But to Mr. Gilmore's point, as long as they're working within that statutory framework, the DDA is its own separate legal entity. And then the second thing that Mr. Gilmore touched on was, following your presentation, um, I think Mr. Smith was given the concurrence to proceed with working with the DDA to come up with, um, a policy or some parameters or incentives that it could use going forward. And I think that's something that he's working on presenting tonight at their meeting, um, just in a draft form, to get their feedback, to then come back and, and also present to council.
I just want to say thank you. You have some questions?
If we purchased Bitcoins for four-hundred, we spent basically twelve-hundred dollars, and if they're selling to thirty-eight now, that's over a hundred thousand dollars. So my question was, is the city going to be reimbursed for their initial investment before the rest of the money is given to the DDA?
We, we do currently carry that thousand dollars on the book as an asset, um, and it would be reduced and turned into cash, and then it would be this body's pleasure is what they wanted to do with that thousand dollars initial investment and a hundred-and-fifteen or so, or whatever it ends up selling for.
Okay, well, it's just a question, because that still leaves them with over a hundred thousand dollars. And, and I'm very, very happy for them to be creditworthy, and I'm especially happy for them to be creditworthy in this way, because that thousand, that hundred thousand dollars didn't come from tax, taxpayer. So that, that makes me really happy. Um, and I think any other questions that I would have almost come out of the realm of the five boundaries of this question about the Bitcoin, but in the avenue of them being creditworthy with the, uh, lot, if they were to turn around, if we were to turn around and give, sell them the lot for an hour, and they sell it to a worthy project with, in which they were in negotiations and with commitments such as the Commodore building in Hefingham, then, um, would that money go into a restricted account for them, or would that just go into their general costs? Because that, those two things combined with the money that they already have on hand, which they have over three-hundred thousand dollars in, so I just wondered how that would work.
It would go back as to how you structured the sale or the transfer. If you just provided a transfer of the parcel over to the DDA, the DDA is free, subject to, uh, what Ms. Newby outlined as the state statute, they're free to use proceeds at however they so desire. And, which I think goes back to Dr. Albrecht's point, they can use it for whatever project they determine to be appropriate without any further import or anything from council. Now, what we have done, for example, on the parcel, the city's parking lot that was originally proposed for that, all that is sitting on hold, and the DDA would not get title to that unless it is a project that is approved by council, and how council determines they want to have that sale or whatever go through, whatever conditions it has. And that is similar to what we would be talking about with the, uh, gain or the proceeds from the Bitcoin. So you, along those lines, I think, kind of following up on your point, Ms. Peterson, you could potentially have a deal about where the, if you approve this, that the DDA has, we'll say, for example, the DDA has a hundred thousand in cash plus a lot that has a value of, let's say, a hundred thousand, just for discussion. Uh, so that would be two-hundred thousand to put towards some type of development project, but as the administration's recommending to you, that development project has to be approved by council.
And I was just including the amount of cash they have on hand now, which is their last financial loss, always like ninety-two.
How much cash they have on hand?
How much money was in their whatever account?
I think, you know, I think it's around forty-five thousand. Maybe a little less, maybe a little more.
That was just going on the paperwork that was handed out at the last DDA meeting.
I only have one more follow-up comment to that, and I would just think that there's, um, a difference in the scenario that Mr. Gilmore just outlined with council holding the property until it agrees to who the ultimate, um, owner is going to be as far as when they choose to convey it to the DDA as far as a project. But I think that we may have to be careful with, that's different from just conveying it to the DDA and then trying to tie restrictions relative to, um, the funds that the DDA would receive should they choose to sell it. So you can put in certain restrictions within D's language about, um, what it has to be used for or that type of thing. But I think that we would just need to be careful in saying that they had to use any proceeds that they receive should they choose to sell it in a certain manner because of the fact that they are a separate legal entity.
Mr. Gilmore, you need to vote tomorrow night?
Uh, I think on this one, if, if council is okay with the proposal relative to the Bitcoins as being presented, then we can just operate with concurrence from you all. Uh, because I want to point out, as Mr. Worthing had indicated, that we're going to watch the market, you know, to check and see. So I, you know, it may be we do it tomorrow, it may be it's done six months from now. Whenever it's done, if it's agreeable with you and you all concur with that, and we're authorized to dispose of this asset as we've outlined, and then it would go into the restricted account still underneath the control of the city.
Council members, are you willing to give the courage to do that? Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence to move forward?
Thank you.
I hope they get to about sixty thousand dollars a piece.
Well, according to Chief Flynn, in the last hour, they've gone up to about forty-three thousand, so it's a good sign.
Pretty good movement. Great investment. Three D is Department of Community Development. Three D one is to consider a moratorium on townhouse developments. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, recently we, um, received an application for townhouse development following our current design standards for townhouses. Um, this is a, this was a fairly large development, encompassing, I think around forty acres of land. It called our, our attention to the fact that our current standards are somewhat lacking, um, and that we need to take a look at those and make some modifications. Uh, what we're requesting is that you place a moratorium on townhouse development for the next one-hundred-and-twenty days, uh, to give us time to do the research and pull together, um, appropriate design standards and other modifications so that we can bring those forward to the planning commission at U. If you concur to move forward, a resolution would be prepared for tomorrow night. Um, I believe that this would not include any applications for townhouse developments that have already, that have already been filed, and would exclude any townhouse development that would be part of a planning and development or PUD, uh, since we have more ability to negotiate and work with a developer to address the design standards that we have concerns about through that PUD process. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And Mayor, I have one more addition to what Mr. Wood said, is that, um, it would be recommended that it, um, not apply to any applications to rezon property to allow a townhome development that are currently pending.
Current pending, yes. I would think so. I wouldn't want to do anything retroactive. I, I think it would be anything that we would receive after approval or if, if the council so chooses to do.
The distinction that I was making there is not just for an application for permitting of a current townhome development, but also any pending applications of a rezoning of property for the purpose of townhome development.
Okay. Thank you. Council members, questions relative to placing a moratorium for a hundred-and-twenty days so we can redo many of our standards for town, townhome developments? Here, are you in concurrence to allow Mr. Wood to move forward with a moratorium? Does this require, Mr. Pine Grace, you okay? Does this require a vote?
We'll bring a resolution tomorrow night for your consideration.
Please move forward with a resolution to approve of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys looking into that. It, it was a, a big topic today, and so was real substantive, and so it's going to be an interesting time. Item four, or councilman write, Mr. Pine Grace?
I have a...
Dr. Albrecht, Mayor Potem King.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I thought the finance department was done.
Not again.
Now, let's go back. I, I marked it off my list. I thought we were moving on.
Dog, five trucks, didn't you?
Yeah. Three D one, option for requiring pickup trucks. Thank you for catching that. I would, I had moved right on. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, and your packet is a memo from me, um, going over, um, facts that we currently, uh, this council previously approved hiring two new physicians in the community development department. Uh, both of those physicians require a pickup truck to, uh, perform their duties. They currently use two hand-me-down or spare trucks, um, that would normally have already been declared a surplus and disposed of for our policy, but that's due to age and condition. Um, kind of a, I feel like a broken record saying this, because I've said it so much over the last year, but due to COVID, uh, it is almost impossible to get pickup trucks right now. Um, you have, have already had them on order. Several of the dealerships have already cut off ordering for the current year's model, or not dealer, several of the manufacturers have already cut off ordering, which is very early. Uh, and we basically would have to wait until the 2023 model year came out to get new pickup trucks, or we will have to, uh, and the ordering portal for those isn't even open yet. Uh, so we're a good ten months to a year probably away from receiving new pickup trucks. That being said, uh, happened to talk to Phil Brandon Ford of Perry the other day when we were talking about these pickup trucks. I was asking him, trying to get a feel for what, when we could order the 2023 models, and what he said was he actually happened to have two on order, uh, that meet our specs. Um, I believe it would be our best option for getting some pickup trucks in. Uh, he just happened to have them on order. Uh, they're scheduled to be built by, uh, delivered by mid-April. Uh, he offered those trucks to us in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars a piece. Staff's recommendation would be that we go and get those on order. Uh, it's probably our last, one of our last options to get pickup trucks for a while.
Questions, council members, relative to this proposal? Just a little bit of feedback. I was talking to a number of the dealers here today in anticipation of this. Just a little bit of feedback. I was talking to a number of the dealers here today in anticipation of this. Their discussion with me was that we're probably anywhere from 12 to 18 months before we can look at any kind of normal cycle on bidding. The one dealer said that he had ordered a special order pickup truck that was supposed to be due in July of last year. And they're promising now that he may, he may get it sometime between April and June. So he's waited a year for this truck and it was a special order truck. So I think what they're getting is just run-of-the-mill, you know, service trucks that's coming through, so.
And on that note, you might remember that over a year ago at this point, this council approved us to purchase six new police vehicles. Those were originally supposed to be built in November, and then February. Tomorrow is March. Those vehicles are still on the bill, so.
And we still go back?
No, certainly not. We're going to go see in those vehicles.
Council members, do we have the terms to move forward with purchasing these at the price outlined by Brandon Ford? Mr. Pine Grace? Do we have any recommendations to vote on tomorrow, Mr. Gilmore? So if you would prepare a recommendation, I would appreciate it. Now, have I caught up with myself? So we got Mr. King. Do you have anything for us this evening? Mr. Hunt?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
I said, this is the councilman items. Do you have anything that you would like to bring for us this evening? Ms. Peterson? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Gilmore, anything additionally you would like to bring to us tonight?
No, sir.
Ms. Newby?
No, sir.
Now, we're going to move on to item five. This apartment head items. Ms. King, anything for us this evening? Mr. Worthing? Mr. Wood? Chief Lynn? Chief Parker?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Swan? Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I do have a couple of updates, if I may. Pine Needle Park, the phase one playground has been installed. And if you remember, that swings spinner and the tables, similar to Andrew Heights Park. Future phases will be the play structure in partnership with the World Foundation and then the walking trails. So that's been completed. And then I have two quick things from ESG. In January, they, ESG staff noticed a air leak in their digester. And they went out, pursued some quotes from outside contractors for the repair, which were between $49,000 and $62,000 to drain the half a million gallon tank and then clean and repair the leak. They chose to do this in-house and save the city that money. Took them a while, a few weeks to drain the digester and then a couple of weeks with staff to actually clean and make the repairs. But I just wanted to make sure that they're recognized for that work. And the last thing is on Houston Lake Drive, the sewer repair that we awarded to Pals Plumbing as an emergency repair. I think you all have probably seen the equipment out there, so I just wanted to give a quick update on that. The biggest impact really to the timeline has been that the sewer main is 17 feet below grade. And when excavating out the area needed to access and repair that line, the water line is too close to that excavated area and has to be relocated. So they have done the repair for the extents of the current scope of the project. I found a blockage at the end of the pipe. They have camered the line beyond that blockage and the pipe seems to be in decent condition. Assuming that they can clear the blockage and the pipe is still good at that location and they can see clearly through the rest of the pipe if it's still in operable condition, then the project should be able to be completed in about two weeks. If there are further damages to that sewer line, it will impact the timeline of the project because additional water lines will have to be relocated in order to get down to that sewer and repair it. So I just wanted to make sure you all were given an update on the timeline and then aware of sort of what we've done to get to this point so far. And that's it.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I nailed it. The recent spinner and swings, you said that was or was not the world money?
No, sir. Just the city.
Any other questions? Ms. Warren, is there anything for us in the city clerk's office? Ms. Clark, you have any exciting information for us tonight?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Mr. Gooden? Anything additional? It looks like everybody else left. Council members, is there anything else that needs to come in? Chief Lynn? Couldn't I cover both of them? They're on the list and it checked out. So is there anything else? I'm allowed one, only one, not a good one. Anything else to come before us this evening? Here you are, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until our meeting tomorrow evening at 5:00. All in place? We stay adjourned.